And how great they are.
How great they are. What was healing?
That's not working. It's not working.
There you go.
Yeah, that does.
And he looked at me and, you know, you see them, they're...
Ready? Well, we're gonna go ahead and start. I know we're still cleaning up the kitchen a little bit. But I wanted to get us started. We've been covering two chapters. That's a lot of material and we'll touch on some things. So tonight, we look at a thing that's entitled Fig Trees and Tenants. In Mark, chapter 11 and 12, we have the story of Jesus cursing a fig tree, but you also have the story of these tenant farmers. And those are the things that we'll see focused on in the video. But I wanted to, before we got there, just walk through an outline of Mark 11 and 12 to put everything in context. In the first 11 verses, you have a record of Jesus entry into Jerusalem. And I put the words triumphal there because depending on who you're reading, Mark's take on that can be kinda different. The second thing we encounter is Jesus cursing the fig tree. They comes into Jerusalem, and he walks into the temple, he leaves, and then he comes back out. On the next day, he going into town and he curses the fig tree because there weren't any figs on it. Then he goes into the temple and does the Mark's version of cleansing the temple. And then they leave and go back out of the city, and they pass by the fig tree, which at this point is withered up. Then Jesus goes back into the temple the next day, and he has a series of conversations then. His authorities questioned, will look at all this. Then he tells the parable of the wicked tenants. And then they question him about paying taxes. There's a question about the resurrection. Then somebody asks him about the First Commandment. And then Jesus Himself raises a question about how the Messiah can be called the Son of David. And then the last thing, well, not the last thing, but the next to last thing is Jesus denounces the scribes for their hypocrisy. And then you can't see it because it's off the screen, because the picture's too big, is the widow's offering. Jesus tells, Mark relates the story about the widow who gave her offering. So with that kinda overview of chapters 11 and 12 in mind, we'll listen to Amy Jill Levine talk to us about fig trees and tenants.
Oh, the fig tree, the fig tree. My students worry more about the fig tree than they worry about the destruction of the temple or the crucifixion. I understand that. They're concerned about ecology. Plus, the fig tree didn't do anything wrong. So here's the story. Jesus and the entourage are heading towards Jerusalem, and Jesus sees a fig tree in a distance that's leafy. And he wonders, perhaps there are figs on the tree. But it's not the season for figs, so he doesn't find any ripe figs. And he curses the tree. He then goes into Jerusalem, and then we have the temple incident. This house shall be called the House of Prayer for all nations, but you've made it a den of robbers or a cave of thieves. And the next morning, when Jesus and the disciples are heading back into Jerusalem, Peter notices that the tree cursed is now blighted. And what do we do with this story? Well, for Mark, it probably functions as an allegory. Mark likely writing 69, probably 70, when the Romans had at least surrounded the city of Jerusalem, if not burned down the temple. Mark knows that the temple is either about to be or will be destroyed. So Mark, in effect, says, well, at the time Jesus was there, it was not the time for the destruction. But it was going to happen anyway. And just as Mark regards the temple as being non-productive and therefore ready to be destroyed, so Jesus sees the tree potentially giving fruit, but not likely to do so, and then curses the tree. Is it a hopeful story? It can be. It can show us that if we have the potential to do something and we fail to make good on that potential, sometimes we're as good as being cursed. We're as good as being non-productive, so get moving. On the other hand, the story can be a problem. When Jesus curses that tree and it's withered to its roots, no one else will ever eat figs from that tree again. There's no possibility of change. When Matthew tells the story, Jesus curses the tree and like that, it's destroyed. Matthew removes that connection from the temple. Perhaps the early followers of Jesus wrestled with that story. By the time we get to Luke, Luke doesn't have this cursing of the fig tree at all. Luke tells us a parable about a fig tree in a garden that's non-productive. And the landowner says to the gardener, chop it down. And the gardener says, well, let me tend it a little bit. I'll put some fertilizer here, I'll weed, I'll mulch, I'll water. And then later on, if it's still unproductive, you can chop it down yourself. I think just as Matthew and Luke showed some discomfort with this story, it's not inappropriate for us to show some discomfort with this story as well. And that's so typical of Mark, challenging us, asking us to react, not necessarily to agree, but definitely to engage. The parable, often called the parable of the wicked tenants, it could also be called the parable of the very, very problematic landowner, bothers me. It reminds me of watching one of those horror movies where you know, don't go upstairs, don't do this, because you know bad things are gonna happen. And there's nothing you can do to stop it. A landowner leases out his field to some tenants, and then he goes away on a journey. The standard interpretation here is this is Jesus going away, up to heaven, waiting to return. And then who's in charge while he's gone? But in Mark's context, the tenants represent the people who are in charge of Jerusalem, the people who are in charge of the temple, the chief priests, for example. So the tenants are given control over the field. And when the time comes for them, as good tenants would, to provide part of that protus, which is owned to the landowner, they don't wanna pay. The landowner says one of the many people he probably has enslaved to go collect the rent. And the tenants beat up this enslaved individual, and the poor fellow has no choice. So the landowner thinks, well, I'll send another messenger, I'll send another enslaved person. And he gets beaten up, and another, and another, and one is even killed. And one would think, I would think at this point, if they're not gonna pay attention to any of my messengers, why, why would they pay attention to my son? But this landowner, who is acting in an extreme and problematic way, says, I'll send my son, my beloved son, they'll pay attention to him. Fat chance. So when the son comes with exactly the same message, give me the proceeds, give me what is my due, the tenants say, let's kill him. And then we can claim the vineyard for ourselves. And they kill him, and he tosses his body out of the vineyard. And what will the landowner do? He will come and destroy those tenants and let the vineyard out to people who will take care of it. And what do we do with this parable? The Jerusalem infrastructure realizes that Jesus has told this parable against them. And historically, that would've worked because the Jerusalem infrastructure, the chief priests, the scribes, the people who are running the temple, their entire power base is destroyed when the revolt breaks out against Rome and when the temple is destroyed in the year 70. So in fact, they lose their vineyard at the same time. If the parable is to have any meaning to people today, in fact, to people in Mark's audience who knew about the destruction of the temple, then we have to take it to the next generation. If you, people who are leading the church, do not give God what is God's due, if you do not live out the gospel in terms of compassion and generosity and justice and mercy, you also risk having that vineyard being taken away from you and given to others who may bear fruit. This story is a threat. This is a story about enslaved people whose bodies are destroyed. This is a prediction of the cross because Jesus, the beloved Son, will die in just a few chapters. And it's an indictment against anybody who owes someone else, who owes God something else. Jesus is not all sweetness and light. Jesus is also threat. And Jesus says, if you do not do what you are supposed to do, there will be a reckoning. Mark does not make things easy. And at the same time, Mark gives us the help and the encouragement to persevere. Back when I was an undergraduate, which was back when Noah was still on the ark, I was an English major. And one of the things that we learned in our classes was that authors want to manipulate us. Authors, including me, want our readers to agree with us. And we use whatever rhetorical force we have to get people to agree. Politicians do the same thing. But I also learned about a technique called resisting reading, where you know you're being manipulated and somehow you wanna step back and say, I don't think so, or I don't like that, or by the way, I have a disagreement here. So Mark and I have agreed to disagree. I don't like the story about the fig tree. I feel sorry for the tree. And I understand it might be an allegory about the future destruction of the temple or what happens when people don't use their full potential, but I don't like the idea of the destruction. And I understand the parable of the wicked tenants about how it's probably related to the destruction of the temple in Jerusalem and the priestly loss of control and loss of political authority. But I don't like a story when enslaved people are sent to their death, when a beloved son is sent to their death, and then the whole thing ends with even more death and more destruction. I don't like stories like that. But I think the reason the Bible gives us such stories, whether we're talking about the animals and Noah's ark, which is basically a story about the genocide of pretty much all of creation, or whether we're talking about the Book of Revelation, the last book in the New Testament canon, which is a bloodbath. I think the Bible challenges us to pay attention to who gets hurt, to pay attention to collateral damage, to pay attention to ecological degradation, and sometimes to resistance, say, I don't want to go there. And it's that very sense of resistance, that very rejection of that end of violence that might actually spur us to pay attention to our world, to pay attention to nature, to pay attention to justice, to pay attention to what leaders ought to be doing. So Mark, you've challenged me and you've disturbed me. And you know what? You were probably right.
So have you ever read the Bible that way? And read it and going, wait a minute, no, 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 no. This just can't, this just can't be right. I enjoyed this video, not necessarily because I think she got it right all the time, but because I think that she gives an honest reaction sometimes to the Bible. It can be disturbing. The stories that we read, especially in the Old Testament, some in the new Book of Revelation, for sure, scares the bee jibers out of a lot of people. And yet, it causes us to have to wrestle with things. So I wanna just walk through these two chapters. And I'm gonna come back and highlight the, some of the things that she talks about as we walk through. So get out of my slide here. So why did Jesus curse the fig tree? She spends a lot of time on the fig tree, and that's actually mentioned twice in chapter 11. We find it first in verses 12 through 14, and then the story continues after Jesus has thrown the money changers out of the temple and made his point about the house of prayer, when they are coming back into the temple on the next day. And so on the first occasion, she mentions that Jesus saw a fig tree in leaf, and he went to see whether perhaps he could find anything on it, Mark says. "When he came to it, he found nothing but leaves, for it was not the season for figs." Now, you know, she makes a big deal out of the fact that it's not the time to grow figs. And you think, well, this story does become pretty unreasonable if you think, if I'm expecting apples and it's not time for apples, the tree hadn't even budded yet, well, was Jesus being unreasonable? But the word in Greek there, when Mark says, "It was not the season for figs," is not a word that talks about time. There are two words that are often used in Greek for time. One is kronos, which is where we get the word chronology from. It talks about the passing of time, hours and days and weeks. There's another Greek word for time, which is kairos, which has to do with those significant moments in time, a chirotic moment. Time is measured by significance and events and meaning. So like the birth of a child, there is a chronological date for that, you know? Born on such and such a date in such and such a year. But we also sometimes mark our lives by that birth irrespective of the date. Chirotic time are those times that bear meaning. So the word in Greek here is not, the word for season that's translated season is kairos. But it was not, and so one could, but then one could say, well, that's confusing, which points out that this story is indeed not literal. It is perhaps, as she calls it, allegorical. The story has a meaning beyond the actual event. Jesus sees this tree, and this tree stands for something. Because in Hebrew literature, Jewish literature, in the post-exile period, a fig tree was one of the symbols for Israel. It was one of the symbols for the people of God. There were kinda two fruits that were often used to describe Israel, grapevines and fig trees. And so at this point in time, the fig tree represents something. It represents the people of God. And so Sharon Dowd, who is a friend of mine, who graduated from Southern Seminary, writing about this, says that basically what Mark is saying is that God expects that every season, every time, is kairos. There is no special season for the people of God to bear fruit. If you go to the Book of Revelation, for example, you see when the throne of God comes down from heaven to be on earth, and the river of life flows from the throne of God, and John says, "On either side of the river of life is the tree of life." And it bears fruit all seasons. And so the expectation here, at least in Jesus' mind, is that the people of God ought to be bearing fruit for the kingdom of God at all times. And so when he comes and sees this tree that represents the people of God not bearing fruit, then he curses it. Now, we may have problems with that. But, and in specific instance, Jesus, this whole two chapters has to do a lot with the temple in Jerusalem and the proper worship of God. And so we could even refine the image of the fig tree a little bit further to say that the fig tree stands for the leadership of the temple, the people who are responsible for the sacrificial system and for the spiritual welfare of the people of God. And the fact that they are not bearing fruit puts them under the judgment of God. So in verses, the first part of it, you have this notion of Jesus coming and expecting something that we might think is unreasonable unless we understand the verb and understand Jesus. So the question we might ask ourselves when we read this story is, is it legitimate for Jesus to expect fruit on the tree? Well, if the fig tree stands for the people of God, then yes. It would be legitimate that if Jesus comes to us, that he would expect us to be bearing fruit of the kingdom of God. Season is kairos, as I mentioned. Barrenness was the failure of the temple leadership to manifest God's reign. But then the question is, when Jesus comes back to this withered fig tree, in verse 20, it says, "In the morning as they passed by, they saw the fig tree withered away to its roots. Then Peter remembered and said, Rabbi, look, the fig tree that you cursed has withered." Now, how would you expect Jesus to have responded to Peter? Don't look at your Bibles. How would you have expected Jesus to respond to Peter? Maybe you would've expected Jesus to say, well, duh. But listen to how Jesus responds to Peter, because I think that gives us then another indication of what this story is all about. "Jesus answered them, 'Have faith in God. Truly I tell you, if you say to this mountain, be taken up and thrown into the sea; and if you do not doubt in your heart, but believe that what you will say will come to pass, it will be done for you. So I tell you, whatever you ask for in prayer, believe that you have received it, and it will be yours.'" So what does Jesus do to Peter's observation that the fig tree withered? Well, you know, it's interesting that you say that because one of the commentators that I was looking at said, if God can do anything, God can bring a withered fig tree back to life. But notice how Jesus takes Peter's observation and turns it in a direction, which Sharon Dowd says that the whole purpose of Jesus' encounter with the temple and with Jerusalem was to basically transform the worship of the people of God away from the temple and sacrifice to prayer. Something that actually did happen when the temple was destroyed, even in the Jewish faith, teaching and prayer. But if somebody's got a Bible that you can look up real quickly, Isaiah, chapter 40, verses 3 through 5, because one could ask the question, what is this mountain? Jesus says, if you say to this mountain, what mountain is he talking about? So if somebody wouldn't mind reading Isaiah, chapter 40, verses 3 through 5. Okay. So one commentator has said, one way to understand what Jesus is talking about here when he says, "This mountain," could be the obstacles that keep people from seeing the glory of God. So what do we do when we run into obstacles? What do we do when we run into problems in terms of proclaiming the gospel, sharing the faith, helping people to see God? What do we do? Do we just work harder? Do we turn to the marketing world to find out how we can market Jesus better? Jesus seems to be saying, you pray and trust, right? So one way to understand that mountain here has to do with that passage in Isaiah 40, which most of the gospels actually repeat when it comes to John the Baptist, right? Or does this refer to the Temple Mount? That this mountain will be destroyed? That this system will be put to an end? Anything that was overcoming the barriers to God. And Jesus definitely saw, as we'll see, the whole system in the temple was a barrier to people seeing God, especially people who were not Jewish. So this story of the fig tree isn't really so much a story about how we can perform miracles, and probably not even a story, even though it certainly contains a word of judgment about the temple system, but it probably has more to do with the efficacy of prayer. The sacrificial system will be replaced by prayer. What is it Jeremiah said? "Behold, the days are coming, when I will make a new covenant with my people, a covenant that is written on their hearts, not on tablets of stone." In other words, this immediate connection. But notice that Mark goes on to say, "Whenever you stand praying, forgive. If you have anything against anyone, so that your Father in heaven may also forgive you your trespasses." So immediately upon talking about if you have enough faith and you trust and believe you can pray and say, this mountain will be removed, the obstacles will be removed. But then almost immediately, Jesus says that whenever you stand praying, whenever you stand to pray, kneel to pray, whatever your posture of prayer is, whenever you engage in prayer, forgive if you have anything against someone. And here, I think that whatever you wanna say about the ecology of destroying fig trees and stuff like that, this is the hardest part of what Jesus is saying. This is the hardest part. This is the hardest part. I can't pray that God will remove obstacles, that God will give us the strength, if I'm still not forgiving people. It's almost as if Jesus is saying that the power of God will not flow through a community that will not forgive. And we could spend a lot of time talking about forgiveness. We could probably do a whole series on that, because it's tough. If you think about the way that God forgives, God forgives not because we deserve it or because we ask for it, but God forgives in order to open up a new pathway. We still have to walk through that pathway, but forgiveness is the door. And a lot of us are keeping the door shut. The power of God will not flow through a community or a person who does not forgive. And the other part of that is that if we are going to pray, we cannot pray against each other. Duke McCall, who was president of Southern Baptist Theological Seminary when I started there, said that there was a missionary to China, her name was Bertha Smith. And Bertha Smith didn't like Duke at all. And she once told Duke that she prayed for him every day, and this is the way she prayed for him. "Lord, I pray for Duke McCall, that you will change him. And if you can't change him, that you'll take him home." Prayer cannot be something that we use as a tool against each other. So, Jesus takes this whole parable and then turns it into a lesson on praying and trust and belief and faith. So, this story has multi-dimensions to it. One, it's a warning against unfruitfulness. But two, it's a lesson on how we become fruitful. And we do that by praying with an attitude of forgiveness and grace. Let me stop there, because we'll probably never, I won't finish everything I've got here, but just to see if you have any thoughts about that, responses to that. Now, true, this story is broken up, so what goes in between it matters. But I thought it'd be well just to cover the whole thing without that interruption. Now, you know, she said, and I thought this was interesting, and I don't want to get too far in the weeds, that Matthew and Luke use the story of a fig tree differently, almost as if they're editing Mark's story. But if indeed the fig tree stands for the people of God, I just simply think that Matthew and Luke use the image of the fig tree to tell a different story. I don't know that they're troubled by Mark's story or not. Maybe they amplify Mark's story. Maybe they do the thing, Peggy, that if God can move a mountain, God can raise a withered fig tree back, right? Okay, well, let's move on. And we're going to back up now to the first of the chapter, to Jesus' entry into Jerusalem. Now, I have a question up here, which I found interesting in exploring this a bit further. Did Jesus enter Jerusalem as a Messiah king, kind of like a conqueror, hence we use the term "the triumphal entry," or did Jesus enter Jerusalem as a priestly prophet? A guy named Scott Spencer, who also is Baptist, I believe, and wrote in a commentary series, says basically, "To call this a triumphal entry is a mistake, because Jesus goes in and claims nothing. He doesn't go in and claim power. He doesn't go in and claim authority. In fact, when he walks in, he goes into the temple, looks around, and leaves. And when he comes back, he just provokes a confrontation." And if you want to look up some things related to this, I'll just throw out some stuff. If you go to Zechariah, chapter 14, the prophet Zechariah sees a vision of the Messiah as one who would deliver Israel from their enemies. And in Jesus coming into Jerusalem, he both feeds that expectation, but also defies it. He doesn't stop people from throwing the cloaks down or waving the palm branches like they did with the Maccabees when they freed the temple from the Greeks. He doesn't stop them from doing that, but he does not then go in like a conquering hero and take over. So, there's kind of a mixed sort of thing there. Scott points out that the only time in the gospels that Jesus ever appropriates something for himself is when he appropriates this donkey, which would be a parallel to Caesar, who appropriated animals and stuff like that. But the difference between Jesus and Caesar is, Jesus promised to give it back when he was finished with it. Spencer points out that Psalm 118 is key to understanding the triumphal entry into Jerusalem, where Jesus is a priestly prophet, whose stage is kind of a critical, we would call it, performance art. A prophetic performance, like Isaiah running around the streets naked, in order to make a point, to challenge, and to get people's reaction. Now, Sharon Dowd, who I've already mentioned, basically says that, "No, Jesus' entry into Jerusalem is an assault. It is an assault of the kingdom of God on the failure of the people of God." And that Jesus' entry into Jerusalem in Mark 11 ends in Mark 15, not with the expectation that God is going to take prisoners of war and destroy evil, but in the death of the warrior king himself. And when Jesus goes into the temple, rather than offering sacrifices or going and taking the high priest robes off of him, he just enters the temple and leaves. But she sees in that, that when Jesus just walks in the temple, looks around, and leaves, he kind of goes, "Heh." And she said, "It's the first movement of canceling temple worship that takes place here." So, now, you read this story, and you can see that different people read it differently, and you can ask yourself, "How do I see this?" So, the next thing, I'm skipping over again the fig tree thing, but Jesus goes back into the temple the next day, and he cleanses the temple. Now, Mark's story of Jesus cleansing the temple does not have him with a whip. He just walks in and turns over tables and makes a big hullabaloo. And here again, both Scott and Sharon see this event differently. Sharon says that basically by overturning the money changers' temples, Jesus just disrupts the whole temple process. All of what they were doing was necessary. People couldn't bring in unblemished cattle from Galilee and parts unknown to offer a sacrifice to the temple, so they had to buy it when they got there. So, it had to be someplace where they could buy it. It had to be someplace where they could buy unblemished doves. It had to be somewhere where they could change their money from whatever money of the country they were in to the temple money in order to pay the temple offerings and the like. Somebody had to do that. And so, when Jesus just turns over these tables and makes chaos, it's basically a disruption, not just of their work, it was a disruption of the whole temple thing. Because not only did he keep them from being able to do their work, he also kept people from being able to buy animals to offer for sacrifice. He kept people from being able to exchange money so they could pay their tithes and offerings to the temple. So, she says, "This act of Jesus cleansing the temple was much more than just making a point about money changers and thieves. It really has to do with changing the whole structure of the way the people of God relate to God, not through the offering of sacrifices and priests, but through prayer."
The objection was not necessarily to them doing what they were doing, but they were doing it in the temple.
Well, if you look at what, let me go back. What Jesus says is, when he confronts them, is, and it wasn't just that they were doing it in the temple, but he says, "Not only did he overturn these temples, but he wouldn't even allow people to bring stuff into the temple." Notice that? So, he was prohibiting people from bringing their sacrifices into the temple. And so, he says, "My house," he quotes Scripture and says, "My house shall be called a house of prayer for all nations, but you have made it a den of robbers." And he's not just talking to the merchants. He's talking to the priests that have allowed that system to go on. He's talking to the people who have just, and have basically adapted to that system. But notice that the focus of Jesus here, when he gives a justification for what he's doing, is that people cannot encounter God in the temple. That prayer is the way. And so, her argument is that what Jesus is doing is, in many ways, opening up the whole system so that people don't have to go through a priest, they don't have to go through this, but that they can approach God through prayer. Now, Scott, the other guy whose commentary I was reading, says that basically what you have here is Jesus trying to reform the temple. So, one of them wants to go whole hog, and the other one wants to go partway.
So, how did they atone for their sins if they couldn't sacrifice in the temple? I mean, Jesus grew up with these ideas.
Right, but after Jesus, it's...
But he's not on the cross yet. The people don't know that he sacrificed for his sins.
But I think that's where we have this notion that the only way people could relate directly to God was after Jesus died on the cross. The prophets, though, keep telling people, "You can relate to God directly." You know, what is it that Isaiah says and Malachi say? "You know, I don't want your sacrifices. Get them away from me, because your sacrifices mean nothing to me, because your heart is far from me." And so, Jesus is basically tapping into that prophetic tradition of Israel that says, "The whole point is whether our hearts are connected and committed to God, not what we're doing in some external form of worship. That's not going to cut it."
This was a form of worship for them?
It was.
To give their sacrifices as a part of their worship.
But Jesus stood in a tradition that said, "But you can't depend on that." Because you can go through the motions of worship. You can do the sacrifices. You can do all of that and not worship God. That was the word of the prophets was, "Just being here and offering a sacrifice counts for little if your heart is not with me." And so, Jesus kind of begins this challenge, which will end with his death on the cross, for sure, but he begins this challenge to this whole system. And it's a system that we get wrapped up into. We don't have sacrifices on altars anymore, but you know, we just sometimes feel like, "Well, if I go to church every Sunday, and I do this, and I do this, and I do this, then I'm okay with God." You know, the truth of the matter is, you can go to church every Sunday and give a tithe, and you know, you can serve on five committees and take food to Habitat for Humanity and nail stuff up and that kind of stuff, and still not be right with God. Because that's not what makes us right with God.
Why didn't he preach against the sacrifices then, depending on that?
Well, because what he's doing is kind of a performance that makes that point. I mean, what you see is that the temple leaders immediately, they know what he's doing. And they go, "Oh, no, we can't let this happen." You know, and so, they immediately begin to plot about how to get rid of him, because they see his acting out of things. There was, you know, one of the things that the prophets did, and they not only said stuff, they acted it out, you know? Was it Jeremiah taking the yoke around his neck, and, you know, burying the thing in the potter's field and that kind of stuff? So, he was saying it. He just wasn't saying it like... But they got the point.
Well, and he was directing it at the temple leaders, right?
Right.
Not at people that were like, exploited by the temple leaders that were giving them their sacrifices.
That's correct. Yeah, this was directed at the people who should have been, you know, like, what is it? Ezekiel? No. Yeah. Ezekiel who says that, "Woe to the shepherds of Israel, for you have led my people astray." And of course, a lot of people would have sympathized with Jesus. The Essenes probably would have, and some other people who thought the whole system was corrupt, because after all, the priests served at the pleasure of Pilate. And they helped keep Pilate's peace, which we'll get to, hopefully. And of course, then following this, and see, here's where people, they got what was going on. They questioned his authority. Again, they came to Jerusalem, and he was walking in the temple, and the chief priest came up to him and said, "By what authority are you doing this? Who gave you this authority? Of course, who gave you the authority to question what we're doing? Who gave you the authority to invalidate what we're doing? Who gave you that authority?" And now, the way that Jesus answers that is not by telling them. He said, "Well, let me ask you a question. By whose authority did John do what he did?" And the people, and the leaders said, got together, got their heads together, and they went, "Well, you know, if we say that John didn't have the authority to do that, then the people will be mad at us, because they like John. But if we say that John did have the authority to do that, then he's going to ask us, 'Well, then why didn't you go get baptized?'" And so, then they say, "Well, we don't know." And Jesus says, "Well, I'm not going to tell you." So, I have kind of subtitled this piece, "What do you do with people whose minds are already made up? You just don't argue with them." They could have had a real bruhaha about authority right there, but because they would not acknowledge John's authority, Jesus says, "Well, okay. That's it." Now, we get to the parable of the tenants. So, the question then becomes, "Is this an allegory or a parable?" Well, an allegory and a parable are similar but different, okay? I don't want to get lost in the weeds here. A parable is more often an extended simile. For example, Jesus says, "The kingdom of God is like," and then he tells a story. And when he does that, you can't then try to identify every part of the story with something. You have to take the story as a whole and figure out, what is the point of the story? What is the meaning of the whole? Because the whole is what's communicating, okay? An allegorical story, however, is more often an extended metaphor, where each part of the story represents something real, okay? So, if you take the story of the tenants as an allegorical story, then you have to ask the question, "Who is the landowner? Who are the servants? Who is the son? Who are the tenants?" Because you can't interpret the story without having identified those characters and pieces of the story with something. of the story with something. What is the field? Right? If it's a parable, you, you might still be doing some of that, but that's not the key part of interpreting it. It's just trying to figure out, what is he getting at here? What is the point? Of course, there are stories that Jesus tells that are a little bit of both, so we're going to look at it this way. Who are the tenants? In this story? Let's say it's an allegorical story. Who are the tenants?
People.
Well, I think if, if, if we follow kind of the flow of Mark 11 so far, I think you'd have to say the tenants are probably the people who are responsible for tending the field, which would not just be the people, it would be the priests and the scribes and that kind of thing. Right? So who's the landowner? Why does the landowner go away? And why does he keep sending people to do his work for him? And why does he keep sending people to their death? Question she raises. See, she got all hung up on the details too.
She keeps saying the prophets that he sent.
But not all of them were killed. In fact, we really don't know of any of them that were killed, that we, that are named in the, in the Bible. Elijah wasn't killed, Elisha wasn't killed, Jeremiah wasn't killed, Isaiah wasn't killed. You know, so is it the prophets? So this is where, if, where, maybe you have to go back and see this as more of an extended simile rather than a strict allegory. In other words, God's been trying to get his people to respond and give him what is due, but they don't do it. And, and, and I think that at this point, this becomes more of a, of a story about the people who are killing the messengers rather than about the landowner. It really speaks to the evilness of the tenants than it does to the naivete or the cruelty of the landowner. In other words, we, we'll go to great lengths to keep God from getting what God has due, even to killing the messenger. And he says that he's going to take it away and give it to the others. Well, who are the others? Well, if, since this follows directly on the, the, um, the heels of, you've made it a house of, it's not a house of prayer anymore for all nations, the others may be the people who will respond and give to God what belongs to God. Now I think, one of the things that I, that she said, I think that is striking in the video, is that sometimes we who are the people of God kind of get real possessive about the things that we have that we call gods. And when God comes and asks us for them, we go, yeah, no, we're going to keep them for ourselves, thank you very much. This is our church. This is our tradition. This is our way. And God, you're, you, you know, you can't be saying that. In other words, we go back up to the question about authority and we become the people like the, like the chief priests and the scribes, who don't want to answer Jesus' questions about who has the authority. Because if we know that if we say, well, we do, then we're in trouble. If we say, well, you do, then we're still in trouble. Because if we, if God has the authority to ask it of us, then why aren't we delivering? I know I'm walking through these fast, but hopefully it's just giving you some things to go back and read these stories and struggle with, because it's, Mark definitely intends for you to struggle with it. He's not giving you clear-cut answers on this stuff. Then the question comes about, who do we pay taxes to? The word taxes there can also be translated census. And they came to him and they said, "Teacher, we know that you are sincere and do not show deference, and show deference to no one, for you do not regard people with partiality, but teach the way of the Lord, and teach the way of God in accordance with truth." Wouldn't that the way just butter somebody up before you get ready to slam them? Ever done that? "Is it lawful to pay taxes to Caesar or not?" Now, the word taxes there can also be translated census. And if we look at it as, is it lawful for us to participate in the census? It is not just a matter of paying taxes, it's also a matter of recognizing that Caesar has the right to have his hand in every part of your life. To count you as one of his own, not just your money, but your possessions. It's the idea that Rome reaches into all of life and Rome owns everything. And I think when you think about it that way, it really makes this parable or this story encounter have more punch. The inscription on the coin that Jesus was given reads, "Tiberius Caesar Augustus, son of the divine Augustus," or "Son of God." And so one writer has said that the coin that Rome minted, that everybody carried around with them, was the best mini icon Rome could devise, because everybody had it. Everybody carried it around with them. Everybody used it. It becomes a part of your everyday life. That's why God was so intent that the people not make idols. So Sharon Dow says, "The major argument here is this. The major premise is that ownership of something is established by the imprint of an image or seal. So if you put your seal on something, or your image is on something, that indicates that you own it. You write your name in a book, you know, you do whatever. A minor premise is that humans bear God's image. Therefore, humans belong to God." So when Jesus says, "You give to Caesar what belongs to Caesar, and you give to God what belongs to God," Jesus isn't saying Caesar and God share equally in your loyalty. He's basically saying, if Rome thinks it owns everything, but you belong to God and Rome doesn't own you. You don't owe any loyalty to them. In fact, Caesar has nothing. Nothing belongs to him. The only thing that belongs to Caesar is whatever God may allow Caesar to steward. Romans 13, talking about authority of the state, is basically a stewardship responsibility to take care of, making sure that evil doesn't continue to proliferate. Of course, we know that Rome was the chief source of evil in the world. I saw, I saw a meme the other day. Somebody had, had put a picture up about Hadrian's Wall. You know what Hadrian's Wall is? It's a wall that was built across England in order to keep the Celts from the top, from attacking the Romans in the south. And they were talking about how this wall was strong and it was, you know, blah, 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 and you had to go through the door, you got, kind of like, you know, we need to build a wall on the southern border, was their point. I'm sitting there going, the wall was an indication of Rome's failure. They couldn't conquer the people north of them. It was also an indication that they were trying to protect themselves after they had raped and pillaged and taken over the land of the south, and they couldn't conquer these people in the north. It was a way to keep themselves protected against these crazy people in the north who wanted to destroy the pillaging and raping and violation that Rome was visiting on all the people on the island. Caesar has, Caesar has nothing. And when Caesar begins to violate the will of God, Caesar gets nothing of a, from us. Well, now there's a question about the resurrection, and, and I know I'm running, I've already run out of time, but I think this was funny. One of the scribes comes up to him and says, "Well, the Sadducees say there is no resurrection from the dead." So Sadducees come up and they say, "Well, okay, look, here's the deal. A man has a wife and she dies before they have children, so he marries her sister." You know, the leaven marriage thing. And, and so six of them die and they get, and the seventh one comes along and she dies and they, and he dies. Well, whose wife is she? Or whose husband is she? I don't know where he will tell the story. In resurrection? God had, woman had six husbands. Guy had six wives. Who's, who's the wife? And what is Jesus' response to that? He said, "You know, y'all don't get it. For when, when people rise from the dead, they neither marry nor are given in marriage, but are like angels in heaven." So this parable really raises another question, not just about the validity of the resurrection, but what is the nature of our relationships in the life to come? Are we just going to resume the same pattern of relationships there that we had here? What does Jesus mean when he says that God is the God of the living and not the dead? Is Moses still alive? Jeremiah still alive? Well, what does that mean? When Jesus says that? Yeah, this is something you probably will have to go home and ponder on. So the man comes up to him and wants to know what the first commandment is. Jesus says, "The first commandment is, you shall love the Lord your God with all your heart, soul, and mind, and the second is like it." Or the man answers that. And the scribe said to him, "You're right, teacher. There's no greater commandment than that, because all the law and the prophets hang on those two things. It's worth more than..." And here, listen to this, "It is worth more than burnt offerings and sacrifices." Now Sharon Dow said, "This is another nail in the coffin of the sacrificial system." Loving God and loving your neighbor is more important. You know, Paul says in 1 Corinthians 13, right? "Though I speak with the tongues of men and of angels and don't have love, I'm just a noisy gong and a banging cymbal. Though I give my body to be burned and give everything I have to help other people and don't have love, what? It doesn't profit me a thing." So when Jesus saw that he'd answered wisely, he said to him, "You're not far from the kingdom of God." Sounds to me like he's pretty much nailed it dead on, doesn't it? Well, why would he say that? Well, because Jesus obviously has not gone to the cross yet, and this man doesn't fully understand the depth of love that Jesus is talking about. He's, he's close. Then there's this question about David's son, who is, how is the Messiah, the David's, David's son? In Psalm 110, verse 1, "The Lord said to my lord," in Hebrew, it's Adonai said to And Jesus basically gives about as convoluted an answer as you can give, because he doesn't really solve the problem, but he, but the people get tickled when they ask, when people ask that question. And he says, "Well, how could David call the Messiah his son when the Messiah is God and David is just a human being? David himself calls him Lord, so how can he be his son?" And the cloud, and the crowd takes delight. They laugh, you can just hear the snickering. Yeah, he put them in their place. So who is the speaker in the psalm? Is it David? Is it a servant? Now, Jesus is the one who raises this question, not anybody else. And I think he does that to point out that Jesus is an entirely unique person, who fits no expectations of what had gone before. And let me quickly do these last two things, because I think they're important for drawing this to a close. Sorry Pastor On. He has a, he, he denounces the scribes. Verse 18, verse 38 of chapter 12. "As he taught, he said, 'Beware of the scribes. We like to walk around in long robes and to be greeted with respect in the marketplaces, and to have the best seats in the synagogues and places of honor at banquets. Yet they devour widows' houses and for the sake of appearance say long prayers. They will receive the greater condemnation.'" Sharon Dow, in her commentary on John, says this. "The scribes make a pretense of piety while ignoring one of the most basic indicators of covenant piety. Care for the aliens in the land, care for orphans, widows, for those who have no family or clan, to protect them." Now, it's easy for us to go, yeah, those nasty scribes. But I wonder what Jesus would say to a lot of the church today, who doesn't seem to want to be at all hospitable to strangers and aliens, to children and orphans and widows. Wonder what Jesus would say about us when we say, we're trying to protect what is ours? In Deuteronomy, chapter 10, verses 17 and 18, which is what Jesus is referring to here. "For the Lord your God is a God of gods and Lord of lords, who is not partial and takes no bribe, as he can't be bought, who executes justice for the orphan and the widow, and who loves the strangers, providing them food and clothing." You see where Jesus has taken the direction? He's saying, "Look, you can come to the temple all you want and offer sacrifices, you can go to all the feasts, you can do everything, you can have all the fancy appearance, you can look pious, you can do all the Bible studies and prayer meetings you want to, but by golly, if you are not doing what God wants done, then you're no better than these And then the, the chapter concludes with this. I got to tell you, I had a hard time trying to find a picture of this woman giving her offering without looking dour and sad. Most of the pictures I've ever seen of the widow giving her offering, it's kind of like she's going, "Oh, poor me." And I love this picture because she's smiling. Jesus observes all these scribes and people putting their offerings in there, giving a, giving, giving big offerings, but it really isn't costing them anything. But Jesus said, "This woman gave everything she had." Now, there's a phrase there that we read that says, "Truly I tell you, this poor widow has put in more than all those who are contributing to the treasury, for all of them have contributed out of their abundance, but she out of her poverty has put in everything she had, all she had to live on." Probably a better translation of that is, not only did she put in everything she had, but she put in her whole life. So we begin with Jesus coming into Jerusalem and through these dialogues and arguments basically upends perhaps everything we understand about piety and about prayer and about worship and about faith. And I think that Amy Jill is right when she says that Mark is an uncomfortable read, because he challenges us. And he doesn't let us off easy in that challenge. Well, let's have a word of prayer. We've covered a lot of ground, done it quickly, Lord. We pray that we will take these words of Mark, these words we've heard from other people, and allow them to marinate in our hearts and our minds, our souls, so that we can hear you speak to us through those words. In Jesus' name, amen. Well, God bless you and we are dismissed. Well, God bless you and we are dismissed.